I'd like to welcome everyone to the September 16th Carter County Board of Commissioners regular meeting. I'd like to ask Commissioner Chawwit to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I could ask Commissioner Mansfield for our invocation tonight?
You all bow our heads. Dear Father, we'd like to take this opportunity to thank you for all the blessings that you give us in our life. We thank you for the sun and we obviously thank you for the rain too, but we'd like to pray for a little bit more sun right now. We'd like to help you look down on this board tonight and show wisdom to serve the citizens of this county and we wish you a blessed citizens of this county and the visitors that visit here in your name. Amen.
Amen. In accordance with the State Government Ethics Act, it is the duty of every board member to avoid both conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict. Does any board member have any known conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matter coming before this board this evening? If so, please identify the conflict and refrain from any undue participation in the particular matter involved.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to remind everybody to shut off your cell phones or mute them, please.
Mr. Chairman, before we move on to, well, prior to item number three, I would like to strike item number five off of the agenda for this evening. There were some conflicts with some scheduling and some people being here that we'd like to recognize, so we'd like to postpone that until next month. So that's a motion. We need a second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand.
We need a second.
No, he's second.
Okay, okay.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand.
With that being done, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, item number three, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the amended agenda.
Second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Second. Good first and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. And our next item is item number six, which is public comment. And our first person is Amanda Gilmore. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Yes, ma'am. Please state your name and address. You have three minutes.
Evening. My name is Amanda Gilmore and I live at 110 Whitewater Emerald Isle. I emailed each of you in the Board of Education a few weeks ago with some growing concerns involving our schools. Superintendent Paylor has addressed many of the immediate concerns and so I want to thank him and give gratitude where that is appreciated. However, there's many concerns, particularly in the expansive economic development of 58 that have not been addressed. Many of those pertain to the population of Impelleteer and Stella. Those questions I've asked this board, I've asked the Board of Education, I've asked the Economic Development Department, I've asked the towns and still have received no answers for. I cannot find a place where that collective data is found either, so my guess is the numbers I have found are significantly smaller than reality. Our schools are reaching max capacity and I know of at least 150 additional single-family homes that have been granted to a rec of 58. Swansboro just finished a new elementary school to accommodate their future growth and their schools are nowhere near the capacity of White Oak. We have been given over $12 million the past few years for need-based construction projects and although the band rooms and the gyms are very nice, none of them have been used to secure a future location for a future school in the western part of the county nor expand White Oak that I know of. Transportation is just one of the problems because of this growth and instead of getting additional resources, we're redistributing and exhausting the ones we have. But soon, very soon, our schools will be at capacity. If there is a plan in place, please share it with the concerned citizens, taxpayers and parents of kids that are going to the school. If there's not, I ask you to stop the development. We all want economic growth. We all understand how this county benefits from it, but if we can't support it with our infrastructure, then let's slow down, work with the other departments, work with the school board and get something in place to accommodate this expanding growth. Now us as parents have several ideas. We've offered those to the board, we've offered them to the Board of Education, but have yet to be given a forum and often are just dismissed with any ideas that we come up with, both to the local schools, to transportation, to the Board of Education and now to you. So I ask that you provide us a forum outside of just the three quick minute glimpse that we can provide. Listen to our ideas, give us an opportunity to show us your ideas, but most importantly, plan for the future growth of 58. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd kind of break the quorum.
Sure.
We have an annual meeting every year in February and 1st of March and you can come speak at that anytime you want to and a lot of the things that you said are not, because the data doesn't support that either. So I'd be more than glad to meet with you and call me and I'll meet with you and sit down and talk about it and we can discuss some of your ideas and I can explain some of the responses that have been given throughout the years and you can go back and look at many meetings, the minutes that we've addressed many of these concerns from this board. I can't speak for those people you've contacted. Thank you.
All right. And our next speaker is Stephen Norton.
I apologize, I have raindrops on my glasses when I was trying to pronounce my name neatly for you.
That's okay. It's pretty good. If you'll just state your name and address.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Stephen Norton. I reside at 115 Colony Point Street in Beaufort. I'm here tonight to speak about our elections. I've worked as an election poll worker here in Beaufort in Carteret County since I moved here in 2018. I have functioned as a judge, an assistant, a chief judge, now work as a rover supervising four or five precincts and I also work on training new and existing poll workers. So the elections are very important to me and I keep hearing all these numbers thrown around. One thing I'd like to talk about in particular is our hand-eye count. You've heard that. I hope you can find the time to come and sit in on one of those public meetings when we do our hand-eye counts. We have bipartisan teams of two people. We have three teams. One team does the calling. The person from the other party looks at the ballot as I call that name off. Two teams are tallying that name as we call it. When they each hit five, they yell tally, we know everyone is on the same spot. Now if you'll indulge me, I heard some comments asking for a 100% recount of all of the ballots coming up in this election. The state normally selects two random precincts, small ones, large ones, doesn't matter. I've done recounts and hand-eye counts for the past five elections. We have never had a single discrepancy in our count. Everyone has matched the machine count, so we know that there's accuracy there. If you'll indulge me, I ran some numbers. For this election, we anticipate we may have 53,000 ballots cast from our registered voters. There are 33 contests on each ballot. My estimate is it takes about 15 seconds to call out each one of those and make sure that the teams are tallying correctly. That's 1,749,000 contests that would have to be counted out by hand. You break that down into minutes, 437,250 minutes to do a hand count for that number of contests. That's disregarding any problems you might run into. 7,287 and a half hours to do a hand count. 1,457 and a half days based on a five-hour day, because this is tedious work and you probably can't do more than five hours a day accurately. That's 291 and a half weeks to verify election results. That's too long a time and we hear people saying, oh, let's go back to doing hand ballots. That's what we're looking for, is months to get results. Even if you divide it by four or 10, the process is still tedious and the accuracy is still not very good. Thank you very much.
All right. And our last speaker is Brian Nicolo. So did he say?
My name is Brian Nicolo, 1502 Salter Path Road. Thank you, sir, for putting that in perspective. I'm here to talk to you. We're past the zero departure point regarding elections with systems we got. I came here tonight to encourage people to vote via whatever systems are in place. I've worked with the Board of Elections and I've talked to you, as I've talked about other things, when I come here each month. They've been professional, they've held up to our scrutiny and I'm confident in what they do, so I appreciate that. But I would say this about the hand counts, it's not that difficult. For example, what countries have went to automated system and then have gone back to hand count? Again, that's not a resolution I'm looking for tonight, but I'm telling you, and they get the, for France, for example, used to do automated, they went back to paper ballots, same night, get the results same night. It could be done at the precinct level and, you know, again, I don't want to beleaguer the issue here. What I'm here to talk to you tonight is about our citizens in Carteret County. Here, we need to get engaged in our civics all over elections. Show up, vote early, vote day of voting, get out and talk to your neighbors, get them registered and show up and vote. We need to win this election for our country. However you vote, who you vote for, it's not who I'm talking about tonight or what I'm talking about tonight, but we do need to get everybody out to vote. We need to, we need to be, what I wanted to say here tonight, and again, a lot of times I show up last minute, don't have all my stuff written down and coherent, but I'll try to articulate what my feelings for Carteret County. I think we need to become the most connected culture here in Carteret County. Local action equals national impact, so get involved, learn the processes, procedures. I come up here and I scrutinize and I question and I challenge our voting systems and procedures. Some people would say that deters people from showing up to the ballot. I think it engages people. I think it makes people look at our processes and procedures and I regret if that scrutiny makes people feel uncomfortable, but unfortunately, you're in that position to be scrutinized. Everybody here is a volunteer. We all are the people, we the people, right? Me here, you there, everybody is dedicating their time. I feel for you in these positions that you're in right now because you are under a lot of scrutiny, especially this year. 2024 is the most important election, so yes, I'm going to ask for 100% hands-on recount. Figure out how to do it. I told you, our group will pay for it, figure out what the cost will be and I'd have to scrutinize those numbers, but you know, if it's realistic, we need to, I'd like hands-on, hands-eye recount. I don't want to do two races and obvious races. I've been part of a hand-eye recount and it was an obvious race to me, in my opinion, the hand-eye recount. How is it randomly selected? I don't know. I guess the Board of Elections will educate me on that tonight. Again, Carteret County, I implore us to be a connected culture. I want us to get together, get with your neighbors, talk to your neighbors, formulate a plan to rise up together and win this election for our country. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Our next item is a presentation from the Board of Elections on the processes and procedures of elections in Carteret County. Caitlin.
Thank you for coming out tonight. Yes, thank you for having me. I'm Caitlin Sabatish. I'm the Director for the Carteret County Board of Elections. As election officials, we are the custodians of democracy. I've been in this position for five years now and in that short period of time, I've noticed a drastic shift in the trustworthiness of our election systems. My goal this evening is to increase your trustworthiness of our processes, the trustworthiness of the work that we do here in Carteret County. I've heard demands for legal invalid elections, certified inaccurate voter rolls, election audits, voting equipment containing infrastructure for fraud prevention, assurance of chain of custody, hand-marked paper ballots, trained citizen witnesses, and the fact is, is that all of these things already exist in our processes. The discussion of the policies and procedures established by the state and the county boards of elections are very extensive. I provided you all with a four-page outline and it's probably more in-depth than you ever wanted to know, but I wanted to give you an overview of all the work that gets put into this. You know, we don't just work for one or two days out of the year, it's a constant process. So this evening, I'm going to hit some of the highlights that I think are major concerns here in the county from what you all have been hearing. I could talk for probably a week about all of our processes and procedures, so I'll just hit the highlights. That will include our list maintenance and maintaining accurate voter rolls, the integrity of our voting equipment, the accountability of absentee by mail ballots and post-election handling of results. So to start off with list maintenance, we do weekly list maintenance. That includes removal of deceased voters, that includes removal of felonies or felony convictions, that includes jurisdiction removals, so if someone moves out of county or out of state, we do those removals weekly. We also remove any duplicate voter registration rolls within the county. Before, it was monthly, then the law changed and now that's a weekly process for our office. We also do bi-annual list maintenance. That is a national change of address card that gets mailed out twice a year, which compares our voter registration address for one person to the address that the post office has on file, so that we can compare our records and make sure that that person's up to date and in the appropriate place. We've been hearing a lot of concerns about voters being registered at marinas or RV parks. That is absolutely legal. There's nothing in the law that says that a voter cannot be registered at an RV park or marina. If that is where they consider their permanent residential address, that's where they consider that permanent residential address. We cannot also remove voters just because someone says that they don't live there anymore. So we've heard people going knocking on doors around the county and the person that lives at that current address says, oh, well, that person doesn't live there anymore, I moved in here three months ago. Well, we can't just go on the word of that person and remove someone from the voter rolls. We have to have contact and a signature from that voter saying, yes, I've moved and that's the law. There's nothing more that I can do about that, so I encourage you to go to your legislatures if you have any issue with that. We can also not remove voters from third-party lists that we receive. Any removal for voter registration has to come from a uniform source, so we get our lists for felony removals, duplicates, deaths from state resources. We can't accept any third-party lists because they could be, they could be just targeting one demographic over another. So as far as list maintenance, that is a weekly process and we're very diligent in our processes, so I can assure you that our voter rolls are as accurate as they can be. Our voting equipment, we use DS200 tabulators and we also use Express Vote voting equipment for our ADA compliant voting equipment. We, our vendor is ESNS. They provide all of our voting equipment, they provide our coding, they work with Print-Elect and they print our ballots for us, so they are our primary vendor. They are the vendor for the majority of the counties in North Carolina. With the voting equipment, I want to talk a little bit about how the voting equipment reads in the ballot that you cast and how there is no room for manipulation in that way. So when we get our coding from our vendor, it outlines the specifics of that election and that ballot. I personally take a clean USB stick and it's not just your average USB stick that you go down to Staples and you pick up. It's a specific USB stick that's encrypted in such a way that it can't be manipulated. So we have a separate computer in our office that's not hooked up to the internet at all. It's a dead computer, Rick can back me up, but it's not hooked up to the internet at all. The coding goes into that computer through a CD disc. So our vendor sends us a CD disc, we insert that, that's how the coding gets on that, I'll say, dead computer. We put USB sticks in and we load that coding to each USB specific for each DS200. So we have a specific DS200 for Newport 2 precinct, we have a specific one for all of our early voting sites, we have a specific one for our absentee ballot machine, our supplemental absentee balloting machine, our provisional machine. So all of these different types of votes that are cast are separated in such a way so that they can be held accountable when we go through our canvas period. So with all that coding, it's a secure system, I'm the one that loads them into the equipment and no one else, once they're loaded in, they don't get touched. Our equipment gets delivered, we maintain the chain of custody, it goes to the precinct and on election night, those USB sticks get pulled out by our chief judges and they get returned to us and I'll talk about what happens after the election day here in just a minute. So the accountability of absentee by mail ballots, I think that this has been a very hot topic. People don't trust absentee by mail, they think that we've got drop boxes and crazy things, they think that we're mailing out ballots to every registered voter on the rolls and that's just not the case in North Carolina. You have to be cautious when you're watching national news. Election laws are not created equal amongst all 50 states. There are no drop boxes in North Carolina. You have to request an absentee by mail ballot in order to receive one, you have to be a registered voter in order to request one. So we go through a checks and balance through our voter registration and through our absentee by mail requesting process. The absentee ballot can be, can only be requested by the voter or a near relative of that voter. There are ID checks with the Social Security Administration and also through the DMV. And even on our end, when we receive that absentee ballot request form, there's more than one person looking at it and reviewing it in our office. So one person is data entry, entering, the other person is reviewing to make sure all that information is accurate. Once the absentee by mail ballot is mailed out through the postal service, the voter receives that and they have requirements on their end, so it requires two witnesses on the outside of the envelope, it requires a photocopy of a photo ID and it also requires the voter signature. So if it does not have those key items on the return envelope, our board will not approve it. When the ballots come back, we have absentee by mail board meetings, weekly, six weeks leading up to the election. So every Tuesday at 4:00 PM, we have an absentee ballot meeting where our board reviews every single one of those absentee by mail ballots. In 2020, we had over 5,000 absentee by mail ballots. So in a six-week period, we're, you know, working late into the evening at some times, you know, going through those and making sure everything is true and accurate to ensure our election processes. These absentee by mail ballots are also trackable ballots, so when I said that there's a different set of coding for the absentee by mail ballots, they are separated from all others. So if there is any, if there is ever a time we're in need for retrieval of that ballot, we can go back and we can find it easily. Every one of those absentee by mail ballots are marked with a, I'll say, a serial number or a CIV number, so a civilian absentee by mail number. I handwrite those on the ballots before they get mailed out. When they come back, our board verifies that that CIV number is the number that was assigned to the voter that it was issued to. So those ballots are trackable. I know that there's been, you know, well, how is it possible? Somebody voted twice, you know? And if someone tries to vote twice, if someone tries to vote absentee by mail and then tries to vote on election day, they won't be eligible to vote on election day because they've already cast their absentee by mail ballot and we can track that through that CIV number. Returning the absentee by mail ballot, absentee by mail ballots have to be returned by 7:30 on election day. They can be returned through the US Postal Service at any one of our early voting sites by the voter themselves or a near relative of that voter. We can't just have anyone returning those ballots. Anyone that returns an absentee by mail ballot in person is required to fill out a log sheet so that we know exactly who that person is returning that ballot for that voter. Our absentee meetings are open to the public, our five-member board reviews each and every one of them, so I encourage anyone that's curious about this process to come and attend some of our meetings and those results, so when we, when I say that we've got our absentee meetings six weeks in advance, we're tabulating ballots but not getting results. So we don't actually close down that machine and get our results until 7:30 on election day, so there is no time for manipulation. We don't know the results prior to the polls closing on election night. So going back to the post-election handling of the results. So once our equipment is deployed, it's out at the precinct and the polls close at 7:30, our chief judges shut down their machines, print their results tapes. We have two zero tapes and two results tapes to ensure that that machine started off with zero ballots cast and then we have our total on that result sheet. We separate our voter history and our votes cast and our tapes. So absentee, well, I'm sorry. The results tape, one goes in the mail, one goes back with the chief judge. The USB with the election results goes with the chief judge. The ballots cast goes on the truck back to our office picked up by our maintenance department. And our ATVs, so voter history, goes back with the chief judge and our laptops with voter history go back on the truck. So if anything were to happen to one of those things, we're still maintaining the integrity of our election results. So once the polls close, we get those USB sticks back, our five-member board is in our office. At 7:30, we close down all of our early voting machines, we close down our absentee by mail machine and we print out those results tapes. As the sticks come in from our chief judges, our five-member board sits in the office, we read in those sticks on the dead computer, we read in those results and then we make a couple big pulls of that data and put it into a live computer. That is how you get your results uploaded live on election night. To maintain the integrity of that dead machine, once we take that USB stick out with a couple runs, a couple precincts, it goes into the live machine and it doesn't get reused. So the USB that was put into the live computer never goes back into the computer that's not hooked up to the internet, so there is no opportunity for corruption in that way. When we're reading in the results, our five-member board, bipartisan board, goes over the results tapes that were brought back by the chief judge, they go over the reports that are printed from that dead computer and they go, and they compare those back and forth with the live results that are uploaded. We've heard a lot of cases where people think that the state board is manipulating the data after we upload it, so it's not our problem, it's a state board problem. That's not the case. Our board is verifying the results tape in their hand and comparing it to the results that are uploaded that same night. So we're verifying that night that those results are true and accurate based on what we have. I've also heard that... I've also heard that, you know, the auditing of the election results should be similar to auditing a business or balancing your checkbook. And that's very true. That is what our canvas process is all about. So after the election, we have 10 days to finalize and certify our election results. And that means that we compare votes cast with records of voter history. We make sure that we have a one-to-one. We have the signed ATV and we have that record, electronic record of voter history on the laptop. All of those results need man, need manually taken off those election day laptops because our election day laptops aren't hooked up to the internet either. So once we get through that 10-day process, it's a lot of work. We're going through our provisional ballots. Any absentee by mail ballots that we've received after the Monday before the election, we're going through those. We're going through all the write-ins. So anytime anyone writes Mickey Mouse or Dolly Parton for a write-in candidate, we have to log that and go through them by hand. So it's a lot of work that is packed into those 10 days, but that canvas period is to certify and ensure that our votes cast match our records of voter history. So in closing, we're scrutinized and put under a microscope more than ever by voter integrity groups and it's, it seems to be escalating more so in my time in this position. In many ways, we're a grassroots effort of our own. We're an office of four people. We have a five-member bipartisan board. We have about 270 precinct officials who are your family, friends, and neighbors. And we're all trying to do the best that we can to make sure that this process is as true and as accurate as it can be. I can assure you of the processes in Carteret County and in the state of North Carolina. And those, that is what I can assure you of. I can't tell you what's happening in Georgia. I can't tell you what's happening in California or Washington. That's not my focus. It's not my concern. But any questions that you have about the processes that are happening right here in Carteret County, I assure you that we are doing everything that we can to make sure that our processes are not broken. I aim to be as transparent and as accessible as I can be. That's why I'm here. I am not going to hide in the shadows and pretend like problems don't exist or people don't believe in our processes. So I'm very open to any questions that you have. And as the, as the extreme skepticism continues, I think that our efforts to communicate our policies to the public and about the fairness and the accuracy of our election processes is even more important. So with all the public meetings that we have, with our five-member board, I encourage you to attend some of these meetings and maybe just see what, what really goes on behind the scenes in our department because the commitment and dedication that our staff and our board has is unbelievable. So, thank you.
How do you verify citizenship?
Well, that is a question for the legislatures, for the legislators. Right now, there is no universal citizenship check. I can send you more information on that, but as of right now, there is no citizenship check on a nationwide level.
What process do you use here when somebody comes down to register to vote for the first time?
On the voter registration form, there's a box that says, check this box if you are a US citizen. That voter registration form is an affidavit. So if that, any information on that affidavit is incorrect or, or false, that's a felony.
We have no way of verifying that right now.
No, I would contact the legislature.
Okay, about the driver's license registration, same thing, just check a box?
No, driver's license number and social security number are required on the voter registration form.
Both?
Yes, sir. Well, either or, either or.
Well, no, I thought you could vote with an ID but not necessarily a driver's license.
It doesn't have to be a driver's license. So photo ID and the ID on the voter registration form are separate. So photo ID exists with every form of voting, but to register to vote, you have to provide your driver's license number or the last four of your social.
But it's not verified, what you were saying?
We do verify through the Social Security Administration and the DMV to verify those numbers. If those numbers come back as unmatched, we don't register that person. We send them a letter, notifying them that the numbers didn't match, but we can't register them if they don't match.
When you're years on the board locally, have you ever unearthed any illegal votes?
No.
Illegal voters?
No.
Okay. So how about for some of these groups that actually do registrations outside of a board of election? Is it verified the same way?
All of the forms have to be processed through our office. I would caution voters about some of these third parties that are going out. You know, if it's a trusted source, like the League of Women Voters or through one of the political parties in the county, I would say that's fine. But you, we've had some complaints of groups, you know, knocking on people's doors and just getting their information and then never turning in the form. So they have their driver's license, social security number, date of birth, and full name, address on the form. So I would be cautious if someone approaches you and you don't know what organization they're with, but it, anyone can do a voter registration drive.
So you talked about the absentee ballots and you talked about the, when it comes in, there's got to be a photocopy of a driver's license and there needs to be a signature on the envelope.
Yes.
Is there any process in place to look at that signature on the envelope and the signature on the driver's license that they're similar?
Signature verification is not required.
And with a person that if, if I were bringing you a family member's absentee ballot and I turned it in, I would have to sign my name, but do I have to present my ID when I sign my name to verify who I am, sign of the name?
No, just sign the affidavit.
So I could sign Chris Chadwick and turn in his child's thing, but no one would know? Well, I guess you know I'm not Chris.
I think that's the point of the affidavit.
If you were voting the right way, you might let it slide.
That's what we're worried about right there on your side.
And I have a quick question on the social security. So that social security number, you get a report right back from social security if it's valid or not?
Yes. It's a verification process that probably happens within 20 minutes once we.
Really?
So it's an active check.
Man, that's quick.
Yeah.
Do any of the DS200s have a modem in them at all?
No, no, they do not. That is a really good point to bring up because you hear on national news about DS200s and ESNS having modems in the voting equipment. Some states do allow that and the DS200s do have the capability of having a modem, but it is illegal to have modems in North Carolina. So they are not hooked up to the internet in any form or fashion.
Who manufactures the DS200?
ESNS.
No, but where does that company out of? Where's that machine made?
I, I actually have a fact sheet on that. I'll send it to you.
So the rules you go by, all 100 counties in North Carolina abide by the same rules?
Yes, sir. Yes, we have a uniform system through the state board.
Right. The interaction I've had with the Board of Elections has been excellent. You got to keep Margot on a short chain there, but she, she runs a tight ship over there and is a, is a really a, really a good organization when I've been there.
I mean, I agree with what you're saying and I agree with everything that you said, but Mr. Burns, I mean, during the last president's administration, there was a Republican disqualified from North Carolina for somebody stuffing ballots. Am I not correct?
Oh, yeah.
So I mean, some cheating, cheating does happen. It's been, somebody got caught. There was a special election to do that seat.
Really caught?
Yes, oh, yeah.
Stuffing ballots into the, no.
I don't know how it happened. I'm not any part of that. I'm not going to profess to know, but, but.
Well, I, that's not happening here.
I'm not saying that it is, but just when stuff like that does happen and we say that stuff doesn't happen, sometimes it just, it fuels the fire somewhat too.
Right.
So I'm just acknowledging that it does exist, but we definitely believe it's not happening here.
Right. And I will say that we are very lucky with our facilities that we get to have all of our voting equipment on site. I know other counties are not so lucky and they keep their voting equipment in a warehouse. Like who, who knows who's going in and out of that warehouse? So in that way, we have a close watch on all of our voting equipment to make sure that nobody's sneaking in there at 2:00 in the morning shoving ballots.
The hand, the, Mr. Norton brought up a hand, I think. Can, can you, so you're taking a block of the votes and doing that? So give us an idea how many, he might have said that.
So the hand to eye, it happens after every election, whether it's municipal or a presidential. The state board randomly selects, and that's a public meeting. You can watch the selection of the precincts to show that it's randomized. But the state board randomizes a selection for every county. We get two, two for every county. It could be an early voting site, an absentee machine, or any one of our election day precincts. A few years ago, we had one, we had Board of Elections early voting. It was over 8,000 ballots that we had to hand, count or hand go through. So we have three bipartisan teams made up of our precinct officials. The, it's a public meeting. It's observed by our board and facilitated by the staff. But we have two of our precinct officials going through the ballot. One is calling, one is verifying the call. At that same time, the other two bipartisan teams, one is tallying, one is verifying the tally on both sides. So once we hit five tallies, everyone says tally out loud to make sure that we are on the same page. You know, Margot Burke gets five, tally. Caitlin gets five, tally. To make sure that we're all on the same page. So we go through all of those. So it could be an early voting site or, or an election day precinct. It's very random.
And I want to go back to the, you said that groups go out and get the information from the public. So, so what are, they, they get their social security number and their, and their driver's license, but they have to have a copy to go beyond any of that, right? A copy of their driver's license because that's required in an absentee ballot? If that was.
For voter registration. People are going around for voter registration. So photo ID isn't required for voter registration, just for any form of voting. So absentee by mail, early voting, election day.
So if I, if I go in to vote, every time I go in to vote, they ask me for my address or to verify my address. Now this year, you'll be handing the person an ID?
No, you'll still have to state your name and address.
Well, I know that, but I mean, the, so, so say I moved. At that point, normally you would just, you would, you would get set aside and verify your new address or?
Yeah, you can update your address when you go to vote.
Okay. But when, maybe I'm stupid.
Are you saying if the address, the address on the ID doesn't match your voter registration address?
Yes, did they look?
Okay. That is not part of the photo ID requirement. So the address on the photo ID does not have to match the address on the voter registration.
Okay.
But you do have to show the ID now, right?
Yes, you do have to show photo ID.
When you go to vote.
And the Board of Elections provides free photo IDs for any registered voter.
Okay.
Good.
I have two.
And I, I just want to make one comment. Any, any folks who've come in that I'm aware of, that have come in to speak to us have always said that you guys do a great job. And we, and I, and I want to tell you that I called after one of the first meetings we had, I called you and you were great and you gave me the full rundown. I'm so glad we did this in an open meeting so we could kind of make, assure that the, we're assuring the citizens of Carteret County that we're doing it the right way. And we can't determine what happened somewhere else. But the, these groups that have come in, me personally, I, I think they've all opened our eyes because we all want a, we all want a fair election across the whole country. And you, you, you guys all are on the same page as that. But just thank, thank you to all the people that go through this process. My mom did this for several years and was very proud, just like I'm sure everybody that's helping you and volunteering and getting paid peanuts. But thank you for all you do. And again, the people who have come in, I think you, you said it in your comments, the scrutinizing is making, making your job harder, but it's making it more important. I mean, it's all important to all of us. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
All right. Item number, item number.
7A.
7A is a reading of a resolution supporting a free and fair election. Commissioner Quinn?
Resolution from the Carteret County Board of Commissioners in support of free and fair elections. Whereas the right to vote is a fundamental pillar of our democracy enshrined in the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of North Carolina. And whereas free and fair elections are the cornerstone of democratic governance, ensuring that every eligible citizen has the opportunity to participate in the electoral process without undue influence, intimidation, or barriers. And whereas the integrity of elections is paramount to maintaining public trust in government institutions and it is the responsibility of local, state, and federal authorities to safeguard this integrity. And whereas the Carteret County Board of Commissioners recognizes the importance of transparency, accountability, and impartiality in the administration of elections to guarantee that the will of the people is accurately reflected. And whereas the board acknowledges the tireless efforts of election officials, poll workers, and volunteers in Carteret County and across the state who work to ensure the efficient, secure, and lawful conduct of elections. And whereas it is imperative that all citizens, regardless of race, ethnicity, political affiliation, or socioeconomic status, have equal access to voting and are encouraged to exercise their right to vote. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Carteret County Board of Commissioners hereby affirms its unwavering support for free and fair elections in Carteret County, the state of North Carolina, and the United States of America. And be it further resolved that the board commits to upholding the principles of democratic governance by supporting efforts to expand voter education, protect voting rights, and ensure the security and integrity of the electoral process. And be it further resolved that the Carteret County Board of Commissioners urges all citizens to actively participate in elections, respect the electoral process, and work together to strengthen our democracy.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Quinn.
Will Redmond, Professor.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
You're good at that. You're, I wish I was saying a couple more years.
No, you don't.
Any, any action on that or is it just remnants?
No, I think we need a motion if we want to adopt that resolution.
All right. I need a motion and a second.
Second.
And this is the reading of the resolution?
I guess I'll make the, I'll make a motion to pass the resolution supporting free and fair elections by the Carteret County Commissioners.
Commissioner Kavanaugh, you seconded that?
Yes, sir.
All right. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, that's passed. And our next item is a public hearing, submittal of the CCATS grant application for fiscal year 2025 to the North Carolina Department of Transportation. There you are. I was wondering where you were sitting. I was looking for you.
I was right back there, hanging out the whole time. How are y'all doing this evening? I appreciate this opportunity.
And just one second. I want to remind everybody, please be careful tonight. The roads are super wet.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do, ladies and volunteers on the election board. Thank you so much. Great presentation. Thank you.
Awesome. All right, Patrick, you have the floor.
Thank you. So before you tonight is, we want to have a public hearing. DHT requires us to do this before we can submit our grant applications for funding. This is for fiscal year '26. So we put out a public hearing notice identifying all of the grants we're applying for, the funding we're asking for, and how much that, the match is for each of those individual grants. And so from you guys, we need an acceptance of, permission for us to apply for these grants as well as permission for Tommy to sign all of the grant agreements as they come in next year. So I'm here to answer any questions that anybody has about all this information.
And to have a public hearing on it.
Yes.
All right.
Need to go into public hearing now? I'm going to go into public hearing.
Second.
You got a first and a second. All those in favor to go into public hearing, raise your right hand. We're now in public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this from the audience tonight?
There is, it'll be the first time ever.
I'm not going to go out of public hearing.
Second. We got a first and a second. All those in favor of going out of public hearing, please raise your right hand. All right. Any questions from the board?
So it looks like about a million dollar worth of grants.
Yes, sir.
And most of them require like a, some a 50% match, some a 10% match, but most of them looks like a 50, some a 15.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman and fellow commissioners, this is consistent with what we've done the past years with the match. Ever since Randy Kanter took over for the CCATS, Mr. Foxwork can back me up and Patrick has carried the torch the same way. This used to be an expenditure to the county of more than half a million dollars and they run the organization now where it actually sustains itself and actually sometimes there's a little bit of money left over that they put back. a little bit of money left over that they put back into capital and renew things. They're very thrifty with the money. They converted over to LP Gas, but the vehicles, which has saved the county a ton of money. And they're doing an excellent job, Patrick and the staff there.
Thank you very much.
You'd like to make a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the submission of the combined grants for North Carolina DOT for the fiscal year 26 of the grant application for 5310, 5311, the capital of 5312, and the traveler's aid, and to authorize the county manager to sign and submit these required grant documents to the state.
Second. All right, we got a first and a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, do we need to do anything other than that?
I think that's it.
Do we adopt this resolution?
Thanks, Patrick.
Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate it.
Okay.
Thanks.
Did you have to hear that, or was that?
No, that was it. Mark did. We adopted the resolution. Right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. And our next item is a public hearing on the North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission to designate Core Creek Marina a no-wake zone. Commiss, uh, Mr. Gene Foxworth called your commissioner.
There you did. You did. So, thank you, sir. So before you, you have a request for a no-wake zone in Core Creek, and it's, all y'all are familiar. We're talking about right there where 101 crosses intercoastal waterway. So that's where the request is. We've advertised this for a public hearing tonight, and you also have a resolution if you choose to adopt it in your packet.
All right.
Need a motion to go in?
Motion to go into public hearing.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All right. Um, all right, a motion to go in the public hearing. Please raise your right hand. We're now in public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience that'd like to speak on this matter? All right.
Motion to go out of public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Need a second.
Second.
Got a first and a second on going out of public hearing. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. We're now out of public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution supporting the designation of a no-wake zone for the Core Creek Marina.
I'll, I'll second that, but I got a question for Gene.
Okay.
Where does this, uh, start and end?
So they did not specify exactly how long they wanted, but it was specific to right there around Core Creek Marina and the RV park there. Um, they did specify that. They didn't specify a certain length.
I know. On the other side of the bridge, you got Bach Marine, and a little further down, you got Jarrett Bay, which I think is already a no-wake zone, right?
So Wildlife will look at this, will forward this request to Wildlife, and they will, with the Corps' input, look at this and look at this area.
I would think it would encompass Bach Marine and the Colette property.
All right. We got a first and a second on approving this. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right. Thank you, Mr. Foxworth.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to direct Assistant County Manager, Mr. Gene Foxworth, to file the application for the no-wake zone with the North Carolina WRC.
All right. We need a vote on that?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Your second.
Second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right. Okay, and now we're down to the manager's report.
Um, thank you, Commissioners. A couple of items that I wanted to bring to your attention. Since our last meeting, the tax administrator has notified the board that, of her resignation to accept an opportunity outside of the county. Um, her last day was September the 6th. Um, since that time, myself and the deputy tax administrator and the management team of the tax department have been assisting our tax customers. Um, tax bills were mailed out in the latter part of August and into the 1st of September. Um, our schedule for revaluation in 2025 is on track. We'll have some dates and some action items for you in October and November related to that. Um, the tax administrator job advertisement has been posted. Um, as you know, this position is appointed by the Board of Commissioners, so we'll gather those applicants together. We'll screen those applicants, and then we'll submit a list of names to the Commissioners. Um, the Mercy Services Director asked me to remind everyone, certainly as our weather reminds us this week, of that it's the peak of hurricane season. Um, I think this time, about six years ago, we were all in sort of different situations. Um, and I'll talk about that in just a minute with my next item, but, um, our county has always been proactive with preparedness for these type of events. Um, and that, that extends not just to our citizenry, but to our organizational entities that we work with as well. Um, and that's been evidenced even this week with, um, the assessments and so forth that have gone on over the weekend and into the day. Uh, and then lastly, I wanted to let you know that our Assistant County Manager, Gene Foxworth, um, his last day with us will be October the 3rd. Um, Gene has been a big part of our leadership team for the past 10 years. Um, I think if you just looked at the contributions that he made six years ago, just those alone would have enough merit that most people would enjoy in a whole working career in that short time period. Um, I think he's, uh, certainly been a valuable part of our, of our staff and of, of my leadership team. Uh, I think he had a new endeavor and a new opportunity that, uh, will, will be a, a great opportunity for him. And I think the best thing for all of us is that it, it will allow him to continue to reside here in our county, um, which I think that, um, you know, that speaks for itself of how much he loves this county and, and how much he's invested here. Um, and I don't get an opportunity much to thank him perfectly, but I appreciate it. I enjoy working with you, and, uh, we've had a good team and a good run, and I'm, I'm certainly going to miss that, but I appreciate you.
That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next item is appointments. Um, our first, uh, board appointment tonight is the CCATS Advisory Board. Uh, Mr. Rod Kirk, our Carteret County Economic Development Director. Um, all those in favor, please raise your right hand.
Voluntold, Rod.
Voluntold.
Carteret County Consolidated Human Services, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
I'd like to nominate Karen Harold Tosto for, for your appointment.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Uh, Tourism Development Authority, Rebecca joins, Rebecca Jones' appointment, um, to the unexpired realtor seat. This term... Yes, okay. Rebecca Jones?
Yeah, it's fulfilling one that we, we actually removed that was not attending. The term will end December 31st of 2024.
Uh, that's Rebecca Jones. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All right, Waterways Management Committee. Um, Mr. Kavanaugh, that's your, that's your...
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Mr. Marty Rue for, for a three-year tour, uh, term.
All right. All those in favor of Marty Rue, please raise your right hand. All right. And then our, um, last item is Commissioner Comments. Who wants to go first? Shen or Quinn? Shen.
We was about to say thanks all good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, start off, uh, apologize I missed last month's meeting. Tommy and I were, were out of, out of town in, uh, in Harney County for a longleaf pine award presentation. Um, very important engagement. So, uh, we missed that meeting. Don't miss many, if I do, for pretty good reasons. So anyway, uh, that's where we're at. Um, next, uh, I'd like to thank the, they're all going now to the Elections Board. Uh, it was a, it was a great presentation, I think. Caitlin did a great job on that and explaining and dispelling some, some things that, uh, maybe folks didn't realize, didn't understand, or had a misunderstanding of. So, um, I think she did a really good job, and I think that whole board, uh, volunteers and employees, uh, go above and beyond, uh, to protect us here in, in Carteret County. Um, she seemed pretty confident in the state overall. Uh, I would have thought, uh, some of the areas in the state would have been a little questionable, but, uh, she seemed pretty confident that North Carolina is, is fairly squared away. And I certainly feel confident in the elections right here in, in Carteret County. Uh, and as long as we maintain that, I think we'll stay, uh, in, in pretty good shape here. Um, it will be a bellwether for the rest of the state. Um, uh, Gene, gonna miss you. It's not too late to reconsider. I appreciate it. I just want to appreciate you, uh, and thank you for the assistance you provided me on, uh, several things that we've talked about and, and things that I've seen around the county, and, um, and you're just hands-on and just take things, uh, in hand and then get them done, and we, we appreciate it. So, um, you're a tough position to fill. So, anyway, thank you for all your help. And the last thing I'll say, Mr. Chairman, uh, it's nasty weather, as everybody knows. Uh, please drive careful, get home safely. We want to see you back here next month. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Shen. Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yeah. First, I've always been confident in the, uh, honesty of the election process here in Carteret County. Uh, I've never doubted it within the last 20 years. We had some trouble back in 1980, but though we got rid of the, those machines. Anyway, my concern is not about Carteret County or even North Carolina. My concern is beyond our borders into the other states and, uh, what kind of rules they're going by. We have no control over that, so it is what it is. One of the, uh, early, uh, folks I spoke, uh, during public comments talked, uh, was concerned about growth in Carteret County and the ability of the infrastructure to accommodate that growth. It's always been a concern of mine. I think mostly, uh, all the board members here have that same feeling. Uh, in a way, it kind of brings to mind, uh, the movie Field of Dreams. You know, if you build it, they will come, but what if they don't come? You know, it's a, uh, it's a slow and steady process, but it's, it's about to get put on steroids here before long. Uh, Carteret County is really going to take off, uh, population-wise. Uh, Gene and I were talking the other night, and it's been fairly steady growth over the last couple decades, but, and I-42 may or may not have a, the impact a lot of people are talking about, but folks are definitely moving down here, and, uh, the growth's going to be on the western end of the county, so, and we're looking down that, that way for another school system. But it's really complicated when you throw another school into the, into the pile, because now you're talking about redistricting school zones, and we tried to do that the last time with Broad Creek.
Yeah, it got tarred and feathered.
Oh, boy, the, the public outrage was just unbelievable. So, uh, that's going to be a, a bridge, uh, y'all are going to have to cross without me and Jimmy. Lastly, Assistant County Manager, Gene Foxworth. This man's been a true asset to the county in all regards. I consider him, uh, one of our treasures. I'm glad he's staying in the area, and, and we can always tap on his wealth of knowledge. And it's his knowledge that's really so remarkable. He's just got such a, a broad expanse of the area of responsibility that he's into almost every aspect of the, the governance of the county and, and can speak fluently and knowledgeably about any aspect of it. Uh, and he's, he, he's always a very, been very tactful. He's a people person. He can, uh, treat you with disrespect and dignity, and his, his bearing and presence and the way he treats you exceeds that same response from the person you're talking to. So he's, to my knowledge, he's never been disrespected, uh, you know, any kind of a, a disagreement over, uh, policy or decisions or whatever like that. Uh, one thing that's true about Gene is, uh, his integrity, his word is, his bond. If he says he's going to do something, or he's going to go see somebody for you, he, he does it. And he, he follows up and gets back to you. He doesn't leave you hanging. And, uh, just instills a, a remarkable level of, of, uh, confidence in him as an individual. Uh, and he, you know, all that builds into his leadership. Leadership not only incorporates your, your knowledge, your, your tact, your decisiveness, your integrity, but it also includes your, your bearing, the way you present yourself and the type of examples that you set for not only your employees, but your peers. And he, he just automatically just lifts you up just by his, 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 his presence. He exceeds leadership. He's going to do well wherever he goes, and he instills confidence in, uh, folks around him, based on all of the items I've just mentioned. And he is a, a true professional. He knows his job. He knows his people. He knows how to get things done. And, uh, as, uh, Chuck mentioned, we're sure going to miss you here at the government. And, uh, Carteret County government is, is losing a heck of an asset, and I, I'm glad for you. You're going into the private sector, make some real money for a change. Anyway, Gene, God bless you. Godspeed. Been great knowing you, buddy.
Mr. Matt's field?
Um, I'll reiterate the comments of the two Commissioners that have spoken, and I'll, I know the other two will have great comments too, so I'll reiterate what else they're going to interject. Um, the first thing that I would like to talk about is, um, on October 12th, at the Friendly Market from 3:00 to 6:00, there will be a fundraiser, um, for the Buddy McKeel Scholarship. Um, Buddy passed away tragically several years ago, and in order to carry on his memory and his, uh, legacy, so to speak, we decided that we would like to help the children of first responders. And so we formed a committee and started a scholarship committee and a nonprofit. And in the last three years in Carteret County, we have raised $110,000 for that scholarship committee, and we've given away every penny of it. And so that's gone out to deputies' children. It's gone out to highway patrol children. It's gone out to EMS firefighters' children. And it's been about, you know, this last year, I think it was, it was over $50,000 that we gave away. I think it was close to 55. And, you know, a lot of boards give a $1,000 scholarship or a $2,000 scholarship, and that is always great to get those, but when you give a child a $7,500 scholarship or $8,000 scholarship, um, we've paid for several now, um, to attend the community college and to pay for all of their schooling, um, and some of their additional expenses. Um, it's an important fundraiser. The, the first responders of this county, whether they're a 911 worker, a fireman, an EMS worker, a police officer, a deputy, uh, somebody from the highway patrol, marine fisheries, whatever, um, we encourage you to apply for your children to get a scholarship, and we would like to ask everybody to come out, and you can buy a meal for $50. You can be a sponsor, and there'll be signs out along the Friendly Market with your name on it. You can be a $500 sponsor or a $1,000 sponsor, but we would like to raise as much money to give back to the first responders than to give to the citizens of Carteret County. So I hope we can see you out on October the 12th, that Saturday from 3:00 to 6:00. Um, that's my promo part of my, uh, uh, comments there. Um, my other comment is, I'll, I'll touch a little bit on what they talked about with the Board of Elections, but we thank them for coming tonight and giving the presentation and sharing some of the information with us that some of us knew and some of us didn't know. Um, and we'd like to thank the people that serve on that board, and not just that board, but all of the boards that serve, um, Carteret County. There are way more boards than you can imagine, and we encourage you to apply online for vacancies in those to help serve the county. But volunteers make up a great, uh, resource. We have a huge resource of wealth of knowledge in this county, um, from the people that move here and retire here, because we are a recreation, resort, retirement community. Um, and like to thank all those people in the, in the job that they do. But that goes back to some of the comments, um, that Amanda made, that, you know, we've been talking about these things for the whole 10 years that I've been on here, and we've been doing planning. And, you know, you can, I encourage any of you to go get the census report and actually study the demographic data of the people that live in Carteret County. And shop me, but most people in Carteret County... And shop me, but most people in Carter County are my age and older. And so, in order for the population to grow, we have to actually beat the death rate. And I know that's kind of morbid, but that's actually the facts. And, and the other, I am a Realtor by trade, and that, that's my profession, and thank goodness, we kind of have this cycle, because I make a lot of money off of it, but a lot of people buy a vacation place down here in their late twenties, mid thirties, it's usually a smaller-sized condo, they use it, they rent it out some. As their family grows, they decide they need a bigger one, so they need to sell that one, so they call us again, we put that one for sale, we sell that one, and they buy bigger condominium. After that, they decide they can either work remotely, or they can retire, and they want to come live down here and enjoy what we've been calling home for a long time. And with that, they actually will sell that condominium, they're tired of the beach, and they will move somewhere over to the mainland. You know, they have a larger house, their children come visit every year, vacation, holidays, it's really good, but then those children start having children, and those grandmothers want to be by those grandbabies. So, a lot of those people at that point in time will choose to move back closer to wherever their children are, and they sell their place here in Carter County. So, that, once again, that's somebody leaving Carter County, not staying the whole time. Some go visit their children, but they don't want to leave here, they come back, but eventually they get to the age where they need care, and one of the things that we are deficient in Carter County is retirement housing and assistance-based housing for the elderly. And that's with pre-care and even with rest homes. So, they have to leave to go somewhere to where they can be taken care of, and they end up leaving Carter County again. So, we do have a high rate of people that actually, we have a high rate of people moving in, but we have a high rate of people moving out. So, in order for the county to grow, we have to not only keep growing, but we've got to beat the people that are leaving. And that's an important point to put out there, so people realize that fact. The other thing is, is Carter County, if you've not recognized, there aren't a whole lot of good jobs in Carter County. Rod has a tough job, you know, the Economic Development Director. His predecessor before the other one went out to all the towns and went around every municipality and actually talked with all the municipalities about I-42 coming to Carter County and what we could do to plan for the growth and how we could help those municipalities. And we continue to reach out to do those things in order to help. But everybody wants to compare Carter County to Wilmington, and that's just not going to be the case, because you've got a lot of restrictions to work around in Carter County, so, which makes Rod's job even harder when you talk about trying to get people to come here. You've got one of the largest farms east of the Missouri, located down east, open ground farms. You also have, in the Down East Community, you have acres and acres of properties that are in the floodplain that make it cost prohibitive to build in, and then there is no sewer, other than the municipalities here in Beaufort, Morehead, and Beaufort, other than private package plants. So, without sewer capacity, you can't have additional development. And the cost of construction, and we all want to protect the environment, but there's a point that we've reached that some of those protections cost the developer and the builder so much, it's cost prohibitive to do anything. And if you don't think so, reach out to Fred Vaughn and talk to him about the property at the Circle, and why it's sitting empty, why he paid so much money for it, but hasn't done anything with it. So, there, there's a lot of factors that will prohibit growth. I, I always, when we talk about I-42 coming here, I, I like to, it's more similar to Highway 64 being four-lane Kitty, Kitty Hawk in the Outer Banks, is what you're going to see. You're going to see more retirees and more people visit here, but to live here, unless we create some jobs, you've got to have, in order for the schools to grow, you actually have to have people working that can, are in the childbearing age to have children. And we don't have that. If you look up the data, I challenge anybody watching this on this video, or anybody in the audience, to look up the populations of Carter County schools, and they're not busting at the seams, the population has not grown any at all in the last 20 years. Matter of fact, it's actually down from what it was. Not by a lot, maybe a couple hundred, but it, it's not grown any at all, unless we have some people that can have jobs in their twenties and thirties, there's not going to be any more children. As Commissioner Kavanaugh mentioned, there is plenty of room at Bog Sound Elementary to move the line down at White Oak and have additional space for more children, but the public does not want that. As Mr. Kavanaugh spoke, we about got tarred and feathered for talking about moving any lines. In other counties, they do it every year, sometimes every three years, but the lines in Carter County, other than Croatan, moving here, any new schools opening, they haven't been moved since I was in school. Chris and Jimmy, David, Chuck, all, all, same high schools, same places. When, when, when I was in elementary school, middle school, there were about 1,200 kids attending East Carter High School and about 1,200 kids attending West Carter High School, and there was no Croatan High School. Both schools were 4A schools. And there has been a population shift from the east to the west, and now you have about less than 500, somewhere in the 400s, children at East Carter High School. You have about 1,000 and some at West Carter High School, and you have close to 1,000 and some at Croatan High School. The exact same number of students were there in 1985. There's only been a redistribution of where the people are living and where the jobs are, because the, they keep killing commercial fishing. Commercial fishing has been under attack, recreational fishing is under attack, you can't catch flounder, they've cut all, they've, all these fisheries, they say that they're extinct. This past fall, I was out trying to catch a grouper, and I couldn't catch a grouper for catching red snapper. And, and you can't catch red snapper, and then they'll put that season right here in the middle of August, when it's so hot, the wind's blowing southwest, it's too, too rough to get out there. So, yeah, they give us a time to go see it, but they put it at a time you can't do it, when you could do it all year long. But I, I'll get off that high horse, but we are concerned with the growth of the county, we have been. Mr. Foxworth was instrumental in that, it's too bad he won't be able to see that through, he saw a lot of projects through, but in acquiring additional property in the Highway 58 area, I won't comment on that, because there's ongoing negotiations, and we may or we may not buy that property, but we have been trying to do that. That was in the bond referendum that was passed by the citizens of Carter County, and the school system has been challenged to participate and help us with that money to acquire additional property. So, we're, we're an open book, sometimes we get so many emails, and you, you don't respond, I mean, after doing it 10 years, I, I don't respond to every email, but i-if you call or come up and speak to a meeting, I'll talk to anybody, anytime, anyplace, anywhere. My wife says way too long, I've been doing this for 10 years, and I don't know how much longer she's going to let me continue to do it. But, you know, it, it is a thankless job, it doesn't matter what we do, we make somebody mad. And, you know, that means people don't speak to your family in a grocery store, people turn around and go the other way, people call you bad names, people write all kinds of stuff on social media, and they don't come to meetings, they don't read minutes of meetings, they don't look at past videos, and they don't understand all that you've done, all they know is what they heard from somebody at the PTO, or out at the soccer field, or at the Rotary Meeting, and majority of the time, all the information is not accurate. So, I challenge you to volunteer more, serve more, run for election, serve your community, serve your county, and make a difference. And with that being said, in the upcoming elections, that's your chance to make a difference. You have a choice who you choose to serve you, and, you know, I hope you take that seriously. I would like to recognize Gene. Gene has enough years of service that he can go out on retirement, it's not the full 30, but it's pretty close to when he decides he wants to take his retirement from the government, he can, but he has a huge opportunity to maximize his earning potential and help his children and pay for college in a private sector job, and I know you'll do a great job. He's done countless things, from boat ramps to acquiring additional properties for boat ramps, from no-wake zones to derelict vessels, to building code, helping, you name it, he's done it. He's kind of like Snuffy Rouse in the septic tank business, he, he takes care of all our crap, you know? And, and so, don't, don't tell the new person applying to Tommy that they're going to be the, uh... But, um, you know, we've been fortunate, I mean, to have Gene, but we're fortunate to have a lot of other people in our organization. We've added in the past couple of years Rod sitting on the front row, who is, is got a tremendous resume, is going to do a great job. Dr. Williams, who could probably retire and ride off into the sunset, serves this county in tremendous ways, and helping for the mental health and the addicted. You know, we've got a new attorney, Sharon. Tommy is just an invaluable resource, and we were very lucky to get him when we hired him. One of the knocks on Tommy when we went through the process is he had been in a lot of different places, but he was working his way up, and he found Carter County, and he's been blessed to call it home for a while. Don't know that we'll be able to keep him here forever, and then, you know, I always tell people when you talk about the finances and the financial shape of this county, the lady sitting in the very backseat of the room, DeMichele, is the one that keeps us having great bond ratings, good interest rates, and she is the most conservative thing going in this county, and she's probably one of the best things. And that, that's not just these department heads, it's all of our employees that serve in the capacity of working for the government versus working in the private sector. We thank you guys for the relentless hard work you do, and, and sometimes, you know, I, I've never gone through a budget season yet where somebody doesn't need more money. And that's the hardest thing in this job, is to find out where it's going to come from, because you've either got to raise taxes, or raise fees, or you've got to take it from one department and give it to another department. And to me, every department we have is my most important department. So, I thank the employees of Carter County, I appreciate the service you do. Gene, I thank you for all that you've done, and as Bob says, Godspeed and best wishes.
All right, Commissioner Plin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, just echoing my fellow commissioners and thanking Caitlin for coming out and giving an excellent presentation on, on the way in which our votes are counted, and the security and the care that they give our voting system. Gene, we're going to miss you, I don't know you as long as these fellers here do, but if a constituent called me and they needed something as far as the county service is concerned, I pick up the phone, I call Gene, or I shoot them an email, and I get a response and action. That's rare, we get a response and action. So, I hope to see you in the woods and the field and/or on the water, so I wish you best with your future endeavors. As a historian, I try to tie in either the date of our meeting or the topic of our meeting with something that has occurred in history, and so today, September 16th, 1620 is when the Mayflower first embarked across its perilous voyage across the Atlantic. And on that voyage, they, the passengers, 41 of them signed the Mayflower Compact. This is acknowledging liberty under law and order, and is going to also give each person the right to participate in government. So, I urge each of, each one of you out there that during this election cycle to go out and participate in government by voting. And you can do so now, as a result of Caitlin's excellent presentation and all the hard work that the Board of Elections and the volunteers do, you can do so with a renewed sense of confidence. I just can't tell you how much I thank them for that. And that's all I've got. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Kavanaugh? I mean, Commissioner Chadwick, sorry.
I know, we look alike, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief, certainly I want everyone to be careful in the weather going home tonight. Last week was September 11th, we all know what that means to Americans, want to remember those first responders that were killed in that horrific event. The lady, young lady spoke about Emerald Isle and the busing situation and building new schools, like, I agree with everything, Mark Mansfield said, but our county is a unique size, 85, 90 miles long, it's not a square box, it's, buses do take longer. Back in the day, when Jimmy was at West Carter High School, living in Emerald Isle, you went to West Carter, or Stella, you went to West Carter, you didn't have a Croatan. And I don't mind being tarred and feathered, if I can save the citizens of this county $50 to $100 million by the stroke of a pen, moving a line where your kid, some from Croatan go to West Carter, some from West Carter come to East Carter, it's pure incompetence to the citizens of this county not to do that, in my mind. So, I'm in favor of moving some lines around and alleviate some of those problems, but it is not a popular idea, but I am in favor of doing it. That being said, and if he got any complaints, I'll have him call Bob Kavanaugh. He's my agent down on the western end of the county.
December 6th, Bob's changing his number.
That's right. But last but certainly not least, Gene Foxworth, has been a friend of mine for many years before I took his seat, been hunting together, and Gene is an invaluable asset to Carter County. As David mentioned, we get complaints all the time, I got three on Saturday, I didn't even bother you with those, but when we get a complaint, it's often time in Gene's department, ditching, or this needs to be done, or can we help this community out, or can we help this park out? Gene always jumps into action, and, and he gets the job done, he gets it done quickly. He's applied for many grants and, and received them for the county, you know, you know, boat ramps like everybody else, but many other things, parks and rec projects, partnership with the private sector, and Gene's just done a tremendous job. I, I know you have a great job, you're going to be staying here in the county, I wish we could pay you more to stay here with us, but you got a chance to better yourself and better your family, and we're going to continue to appoint you to board, so we're not going to let you go too far.
It's not a budget, Gene, sorry.
You'll be doing stuff for free for us, so we certainly appreciate everything Gene does, and he's done a great job, and that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, I wanted to mention that Lori Turner, our clerk, is not here tonight, she's under the weather, and just want to thank her, I'm sure all of us thank her. She, she made sure everything was set up and perfectly ready for everybody, she did all that through Tommy, I guess you helped, and the staff has helped tonight, but she was very concerned about not being here tonight, and we all want to wish her good health. And, and with everything said, definitely thank you to Caitlin and all the folks who work in the, in the Board of Elections, and again, all the people who have gained our attention about looking at all the things involved in an election. One of the big problems in the country right now, it's not just here in Carter County, it's everywhere, you can't find any help. I mean, I was listening to the radio on the way in, they don't even have enough Secret Service agents, they can't hire enough to take care of the, of, you know, doing all the things they have to do, not, not less, not even mentioning President Trump, who of course had another assassination attempt. But that, that is going on across our whole country. We've got, we've got, we've got job openings in Carter County right now for very good jobs, and we're not getting the people to, to sign up for those jobs. I bring all that up to bring up Gene Foxworth. Gene Foxworth, everything that's said tonight, obviously, is very true, but one of the, one of the things I like most about Gene is he definitely gets stuff done, and we've been in situations where we've had a lot of things to catch up on, we've had a lot of projects that people weren't even bidding for, and our staff, through him, have made those projects happen. And, and I just want to say, that's a, that's a, that's a big burden to take. That old saying, you wear a lot of hats, he wears a whole lot of hats, and, and him teamed with both Tommy and Dee are a great team, and I, I'm, we're going to have to find somebody really good to fill those shoes. I served on the, the Sir Swama Trash Board, I call it the Trash Board, it's very important. Our local transfer station on, on Hibbs Road has the cat, has the, is, is dealing with as much trash as, where's the place in Maryland?
Richmond.
Richmond?
Richmond, Virginia.
Richmond, Virginia, we have that capacity going into that. That's, that's, that's Carter County's trash is going to that site and then being shipped up to Tuscarora to be put in the landfill, things like that. And, and, and I've been on a lot of boards, but this board's very important. And we were coming back from a meeting the other day, and Gene has said he's going to, you know, hey, I'm going to live in the county, I'm going to try to help with that, and we've got to, we've got to push for that, because we're supposed to have a lot of things done to our transfer station to make it more efficient, things like that. That's just one of the things, but when I'm in meetings with Gene, and there's officials here from across the state, I'm sure everybody will agree, they listen to what Gene says. Gene's, Gene's, Gene's very good at his job, is very knowledgeable, and I'm positive he'll do good in the outside world, and I'm positive that he'll, he loves Carter County, his family loves Carter County, and, and we're going to really miss you, but thank you for volunteering and trying to help in any way you can. And I, I say to the other commissioners... And I say to the other commissioners, Commissioner Kavanaugh, and if Commissioner Wheatley was here, that we try to help in any way to help with any of these boards, and the public needs the help. We got to get more people on these boards to try to make sure that Carter County's taken care of. With all that said, get out and vote. It's your right, right? So let's get out there and vote, and...
Be careful going home.
And be careful going home. My wife just texted me, and I didn't mean to...
Got a tornado warning.
Yeah, there's a tornado warning in Emerald Isle, and I'm up in Beaufort, so that's not a good feeling, but anyways, everybody be safe. Thanks for coming out. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those... All right.